In a different spot.
Call the meeting to order, please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, good evening, everybody. And get an approval of the minutes of meeting held on December 12th.
So moved, second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That motion passes. Do not have anybody wishing to address the board tonight, so moving on to item six, approval of the agenda. Can I get a motion in a second, please?
Second. First.
So moved.
You were so excited.
Get my chance and screw it up.
I was too late saying.
He sensed that you were going to say it, so he was just following it.
Right, he's so quick.
Yes, all right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That motion passes, and on to the good news report.
And Deanna's coming up, but while she's coming up, can I just say I'm very excited for the good news report tonight, because this has been a couple of years dreaming ahead, and now it's a reality, so Deanna, take it away.
Okay, and now you're going to preempt me, because I had two little messages to deliver before the great good news report. So let me allow me to mention our first other two bits of good news this afternoon. It's Law Enforcement Appreciation Day today, so we wanted to say thank you to all of our entire law enforcement community in Sioux Falls for providing the safety and support that they do in our schools and our community every single day, but more specifically, of course, our school resource officers, represented tonight by Bob Dregger, and for all they do for us in our buildings in terms of providing safety and security, but additionally, serving as role models and another caring adult that students can interact with and build relationships with for long-term relationships into our community. So thank you, Bob, please convey the rest of our thanks to the rest of your team. Additionally, we wanted to mention and appreciate all of those who serve as mentors in the Sioux Falls School District. January is Mentor Appreciation Month, and of course, mentoring can be through formal programs like our school-based mentoring program with Lutheran Social Services and also our teammates mentoring program. We have more than, excuse me, more than 1,200 student matches with adults in our community, so we say thanks to all of those adults also who serve as role models. And beyond that, then we also have veteran teachers who are mentoring new teachers, and there's just a lot of growth opportunity available for anyone that wants to serve as a mentor in any capacity. So really just encourage people, if you're looking for a New Year's resolution or something exciting to do in a way to give back, mentoring is certainly a valued asset among our, in our schools and among our students as well. So now, to the drum roll information. Well, earlier today, you heard in your biennial board retreat about plans for new programming for students that were going to start next fall. Those opportunities include the LPN pathway for certification, athletic training, and also the new cyber academy. About this time last year, we were standing here telling you a little bit about the opportunities that were ahead for this school year, and as Dr. Stavum said, they seemed but such a dream at that point in time. We were anticipating three new classes and pathways. Those were the guitar class, the advanced sign, American Sign Language classes, and then ag being offered in the Sioux Falls School District for the first time at CTE Academy. So we've been pleasantly surprised at the student interest in all three of those programs, but especially so in our ag programming and in FFA, Future Farmers of America. And in addition to having these new and relevant learning opportunities to engage our students, it doesn't hurt to have a dynamic teacher at the helm who can help bring the curriculum to the next level. And so we found that in Andrew Jensen, and he is a first ag teacher in the Sioux Falls School District. He's here with us tonight and is going to give an overview about what students are learning, and by popular demand, he's going to demonstrate how the ag curriculum is or is not going to the dogs.
So these are just a couple of models that my students made, but yes, I am, I'm Andrew Jensen. I'm very excited to be the first ag teacher for the Sioux Falls School District. I think my dad is even more excited, which is, which is really cool. So yeah, just a quick overview, I was told to keep this about 45 minutes or less, so that's a joke. But yeah, we currently have about 23 students in our ag program, which seems a little less than, than other times, but, or in other programs, but we offer two classes currently, and then next semester will be probably closer to 35. As you remember, I was hired later in the semester after students had been registered for classes, and so we're actually really excited that we have the amount of students that we do. The FFA program has eight students in it. They participated this fall in a leadership development event or an LDE, in Marketing Plan. They placed second in our district in Advanced to State, and then they actually placed seventh at State, which is awesome. I've never had a marketing team Advanced to State after five or six years, and so they did it, and I'm very excited for them for next year. I was taught, I was told to really talk about this dog project, and I'm very excited about it. So I teach a companion animal class, or small animal science, I think is what we call it, and so what we do is we go through every industry within the small animal science world. So we talked about careers, because that's something that CTE is very passionate about, and then we talked about the dog industry. And so what students were tasked with was, they had to go through and learn about the dog groups, so the toy group, the herding group, non-sporting, things like that. And then what they did is they selected a breed of dog from the FFA ID list, and then they were told they had to create a life-size replica of their dog. So these are just two of the small dogs that I had. I had Husky and Dover, or yeah, Doverman Pinscher, quite large dogs, and students took three or four days to do this, and so, and they really loved it. So then what we did after that is we watched what a dog show really looks like. We pulled up the AKC National Dog Show that they have on Thanksgiving. We watched that, they got inspired, and then we invited a celebrity, Mitchell Olson, in to judge our dog show, and he was just so excited, which made the kids even more excited, and so he picked a miniature Pinscher for best in show, an Alaskan Malamute, as our reserve in show. So he, he doesn't, he's not a dog breeder, but he asked the kids a lot of great questions about what is, what is, tell me more about your dog, what's the history of your dog, things like that, and so the kids had a really great time, and I asked them to, to hold on to a couple for me. So yeah, they, they had a great time wrapping up this semester. We started doing some vet tech stuff, so they learned how to do injections. They learned, they did a fecal lab, so they took some pig poop, and they'd check for worms, and they said it was really gross, but I think they had a great time counting eggs in, in, under the microscope. So really great for them, and they're even more excited for large animal science this, this coming spring with what we've got planned there. So I'm excited, and they're excited, and it's, it's a great opportunity for our students in Sioux Falls.
Where did you come from? Where were you teaching before you came to Sioux Falls School District?
Before I came here, I taught in Chester, just north of town, and I taught there for six years, and then before that, I taught out west in Fort Pierre in Stanley County, and actually never wanted to be a teacher. I just kind of walked into it, and honestly, it was the best thing that ever happened to me, and I just, I grew up in production ag. I, I grew up farming with my dad, I still do that on the weekends, and so it's, it's my way to share my excitement for ag, as well as getting to teach, and yeah, like I said, it's, it's the best thing I've ever done.
You can tell you really enjoy it, and I'm, I'm just so excited that we finally have it in Sioux Falls School District. As a former FFA and 4H member, I just think any, with South Dakota being the number one industry, ag, to offer this now for our students is fantastic, and with our synergy with Southeast Tech and having the Vet Tech program and other things that we can take advantage of there.
Yeah, yeah, and I've found that a lot of our students would like to go into either veterinary technology or vet med, so I think out of the 21 students that are in that class, I would say at least 12 of them have some ambition on going to Southeast Tech for Vet Tech, or starting at SDSU, and then, and then moving on into their, their DVM. So it's really cool, they, they've really enjoyed the class, so they, they may tell me that they didn't, but I really think they did, but yeah.
I just want to say that I was the one that pointed out to Dr. Stavum about the dog show, because I saw it online, and I was like, you have got to see this. So we pulled up Facebook and, and showed, so I'm glad that you're here, and I get to see them in real life, because I just saw them online, but I would echo, I have some relatives that live in Crooks, and they're, my, my nephews are involved in FFA, and it's not just about learning about animals, it's like, it's the, the presentation, the public speaking, the, there's so many different things that regardless of what your future career goals are, are going to benefit you. And so if people can do it while learning something that they're passionate about, it becomes less work and more just something that you do. So I'm also very excited that it's in our district. You know, we might be the largest school district, and we're in a city, but that doesn't mean we're not impacted by ag.
Right.
And there's so many different options, whether it's ag business, or whether it's, you know, vet tech or whatever, and so it's very exciting to have you here and engaging students, and I can only imagine how many, how hard that enrollment in that program is going to increase as students continue to interact with you and hear great stories from other students as well. So thank you so much.
Thank you. I'm from Iowa, so the, don't hold that against me, Carly. Anyway, so the kids, we talk a lot about tax base and what that looks like, you know, from Iowa, where that comes from, how we're able to fund what we fund in, in, on both Iowa and South Dakota, so there's a whole macroeconomics as it pertains to ag that you're able to do. And one trip out to the Empire Mall, if you count the number of Iowa license plates out there, the kids can, you know, really see clearly what ag does for our two important states, and Todd might echo some of that from a budgeting standpoint, as it pertains to taxes, but it's great what you're doing.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
It's not very fair to have a first-year teacher have to present at a board meeting, so thank you for doing that.
Yeah, this is way more intimidating than when I was at Chester, and we were just in the library, and hey, I'm here, but yes, thank you so much for having me, and I look forward to sharing more about the ag program as, as we continue on this really fun journey.
We look forward to hearing more, so thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to item eight, conflicts of interest. I do not believe we had any new ones this meeting. So moving on to the approval of consent agenda, can I get a motion in a second, please?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That motion passes. Mark, is your mic on?
He said he's not participating.
Oh.
He's embarrassed.
It is, I'm just teasing you. All right. Oh, that's it, no supplemental. So moving on to the reports of the superintendent. Dr. Stavum.
Yep, and I am going to turn it over just briefly to Mr. Veek. Brief reminder, things kick off tomorrow, so we'll get a little busier here with the legislative season starting up.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, this could probably be the fastest one we're gonna have of these, so let's enjoy it. As, as usual, we're gonna have our legislative position statements. All bills relevant to the district are analyzed by the appropriate administrator, and then the recommended position is developed, and it's support, opposed, amend, or neutral, and we provide rationale. Then the board approves those or amends them at the next regular school board meeting, and they're all available at that little tiny website there. If you go to our website and go to the search thing and start typing in legislative, it'll be about the first thing that pops up. So the positions will be available there. We used to have a long form and a short form. The long form had all the narrative and lots of information, like who was the spot, who all the sponsors were, and the short form was just on a page, and you could just look at it online and just see like the title of the bill and what the position of the district was, and then where the bill was at in the process. These are gonna be combined into one, it's more interactive, you can go out there, you can click on things and see who the sponsors are, or you can go get into a deeper dive on the analysis if it's a particularly important bill to us and all that good stuff. So it'll be in one document, but you can print it out and carry it, or you can do it online and get deeper into it as you go. Key legislative dates, since we don't have anything to analyze for you tonight, the first day of this session, as Dr. Stavum said, is tomorrow. They already have prefiled bills in there. As of January 5th, there was 24 House and 19 Senate. I looked today, there's 49 House bills now out there, and 52 Senate bills. There's nothing in the House that we would probably analyze, at least nothing I noticed. There's about a handful of bills in the Senate, about four of those involve juvenile justice. One is the 5% that the governor proposed, and then the property tax levies that go along with that, 5% increase, and then one is on education complaints to the Professional Practices Committee. So we will analyze those, and you'll be able to see those shortly. What else? January 23rd is the first date you'll officially approve the positions. That's your next board meeting. The last day for unlimited bills from legislators is the next day, so there'll be probably quite a few by January 23rd, but then a bunch more will pile in right after we meet. February 1st is the last day for individual bills. The second is the last day for committee bills to be introduced. Then the school board will review again February 6th, and then February 20th, there'll be no new bills, probably, but we'll see where, where the bills we're watching are at that time. February 22nd is the last day for bills to pass the House of Origin. The 27th is the last day for special appropriation bills to pass the House of Origin. March 6th is the last day for a bill to get through both houses, and then the rest of the days are held for conference committees. The last day of the main session is March 9th, and veto day is 27th. And the recommendation is for you to acknowledge the update on the 2023 legislative session.
Any questions or comments for Todd?
Just hope the public is engaged and be interested to see what happens tomorrow during the speech and get more information on his plan.
Okay. All those in favor of acknowledging the update on the 2023 legislative session, signify by, or can I get a motion in a second?
Sorry.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That motion passes, and moving on to policies.
Thank you. I have two items on the agenda tonight. You know, as a part of our continual review of the policies and regulations, we have eight policies up for this meeting. The first item is three policies are up on a first read. These will return for a second reading on February 13th. The first of these policies, JJAV, is the limited open forum for middle and high schools. The changes here are to define and delineate between sponsored and non-school-sponsored clubs and activities. The second policy is JJH for student travel. The purpose of the changes here are to set communication and facility use guidelines for organizing non-school-sponsored club trips, and to update some references in that policy. And then the final of the three policies up on a first read, JJI, Student Athletics and Activities, is to clarify the process for 7th and 8th grade students wishing to petition up to high school athletics and some other minor changes in that policy. If you have any questions on those, if not, I'd ask that you acknowledge the first reading of these policies and regulations, and again, they'll be up on February 13th for a second read.
Any questions or comments?
I would just ask Brett, what's the best way for people to provide feedback if they have feedback on a first reading?
They can provide comments to board members, they can present at the next meeting or the meeting on February 13th, and then, of course, they can provide feedback via the Let's Talk app on our website.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments or questions?
Was there much discussion on that change in the, I shouldn't say change, because it's not really changed, but the policy with the middle school sports participation?
You know, there was a lot of work that was done with the ADs at both the middle school and high school, and so I feel like it was really well-vetted to see what the best interest was going to be for that population of students when it came to us, and so since they deal with that specifically, I feel like we were able to honor what they felt was the best for students and those sports in general, so do you have anything to add to that?
Nope.
It's like they did a really nice job.
And just for the public, Mark and Carly sit on the policy committee, so they are engaged in that, not, since it's not a full board meeting, and that's why I asked.
Any other comments? All right, can I get a motion? All right, can I get a motion in a second to acknowledge the first reading of the three policies?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed, same sign. That motion passes.
And then I have one other item here. The remaining five policies on the agenda tonight are just up on a review revise. Of these five policies, only one has minor changes, and that's Policy KDDB. That's the Public Information and Communication. The only minor changes there are reference changes for the, the title of the Coordinator of Athletics. So just to change the title of that position throughout the policy. And with that, I'd ask that you approve the review revision of these five policies and regulations.
So moved.
Second. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed, same sign. That motion passes. All right, and on to item 11, setting the 2023 school board election date. Turn that over to Mr. Veek as well. As you know, we need to set the timeline for spring election for a board seat.
Thank you. As you know, Board Member Mickelson's term is up this year, so we're asking you to set the deadline. I'll just, the election day and then some key deadlines. Here's the, the whole list. And you've gotten your materials of a resolution. You can, you don't have to read it. You can, I mean, out loud, you can just move the resolution. But I'll just point out a few, a few of these key dates. The election date is May 16th. That's the obvious one. Protestants may begin to be circulated, picked up and circulated on March 7th. They're due April 7th. And May 1 is the deadline for voter registration, and that's when absentee balloting needs to begin. And again, the election date is on May 16th, so I just ask that you pass the resolution you have in your materials. Thank you.
Any questions or comments?
I'd just like to acknowledge that we have to have it this year because the state sets the three-year terms, and that's why we have elections on odd years. We're actually looking to hopefully get that change to go to four-year terms so that we can be on the same election cycles as both the city and the, and the state.
All right. All those in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Aye opposed, same sign. That motion passes. Thank you, Todd. A just quick programming note, we are going to be adjourning Sioux Falls School District Board Meeting, but then we will be reconvening shortly thereafter for a quick pay bills meeting for Southeast Tech Technical College meeting following this. So just programming notes. And it might be helpful if people were to move any conversations to the outer room so that you could do that as quickly as possible. Yes. All right, so can I get a motion to adjourn, please?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed, same sign. We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.